Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the council meeting to order. And the first thing I'm going to ask is there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, staff have no agenda changes to present this evening.
Great. Next, I'd like to ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Ms. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda and submitted, if there's no questions, I'd make a motion to get approved and submitted.
Second. Have the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda. We'll go to Jamie for the review on that.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the consent agenda for September 28th, 2020, seconded by Councilmember Campbell.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time. The motion carries unanimously. We'll move to public forum. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council? Seeing the usual faces and the new faces, I would say not. So we'll close the public forum portion. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we're going to move right into new business. And the first item on that agenda is consideration of Computer Information Concepts Annual Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, in your packet is included the annual, they call it peopleware agreement with Computer Information Concepts, or CIC. That is our municipal accounting software and cover services from cemetery to court to budgetary payroll and personnel. As you can see, this is an agreement you, well, most of you should be familiar with. You see every year. We did see our costs increased by about nine percent. The large driver of that is the amount of data that's being created just by the system. We had to pay for increased storage capacity. Now, we got bumped up to that, that next tier. So we did see that. It's, it's a little bit larger in increase than we expected, but it's still very much is doable in the budget. Shouldn't cause us any major issues as far as ongoing operations for the rest of the year. We obviously don't think it's a very good with the AMI project going on to contemplate switching to a different software company at this point. So that is why that option is, is not presented. And we would just ask for approval of that agreement if there are no questions or comments.
Is the AMI driving force in the increased data?
Um, no. This was actually just naturally going up. We'll plan to kind of dive in and look and make sure that what we're keeping is mirrors or basically our records retention, because it is possible that we're storing old data now that we could actually ask them to wipe off the server. It's one of those that kind of communicated like, oh, you went up to your next tier in gig. And we did not have a chance with, because we're also switching out our physical server to get in and dial that down. But it's, it's something that we hope that we'll get, we'll come back and revisit, hopefully get it down and, and see. One of the issues is we did start scanning documents. And so if we have more like utility accounts set up, that all creates image files then that get stored.
As large.
Yeah. And those are very large to transmit, so. We, but it's time to probably have them or regular IT managed service company get together again and make sure that they're pulling what they need to pull. We're purging the old CIC data out of the system because we don't need, you know, backups from 2000.
How long do we have to maintain that data?
A majority of our financial records and stuff, we don't keep longer than five years, like physical here in the building. So it's just making sure that also it gets interesting with like utilities, some of that information we do have to keep as far as, you know, the change tax and stuff for a little bit longer. But five years is usually with a few exceptions, the normal time for most records.
Do we expect to see an increase of data storage with the AMI system?
Yeah. And that's why we really want to dial down before that begins creating, because I'm sure that's going to, and we don't know yet how much that's going to write in. The fact that we'll be getting, you know, on demand readings, if that's going to create constant records anytime we pull that in, or if that's just going to be when we do billing, it just creates kind of that normal one need per year. So once we get that finished, we can, we can ask that and be sure to be planning for next year that we have adjusted appropriately.
Say now a couple. Years ago, we were discussing. We thought digital vaporized and that means.
Yeah.
Now we're paying for it.
Now we're paying for it. Yeah. Yep.
Did the CIC go across our entire customer base and issue a nine percent increase? Is this a blanket all over?
A portion of it would be, I mean, I think the standard, you know, is like two to three percent. And then one of our big things was that jump to the next tier, which we shouldn't sit at this tier now for, you know, it should be a few more years, I would think, before we were graduating up to that next tier of, of storage capacity. But they give you, you know, 50 gigabyte chunks, basically.
Well, rather than that nine percent, we didn't intend to go that high. We'll do our best to reduce it. Take a step to three percent. Shame on us if we see. If there's no more questions, I'd make a motion to approve the annual peopleware agreement with Computer Information Concepts for an amount not to exceed $11,505. And authorization for staff to sign necessary documents. Second. Third motion and second, we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Farmer to approve the annual peopleware agreement with Computer Information Concepts for an amount not to exceed $11,505. And authorization for staff to sign necessary documents, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of marquee maintenance agreement with Luminous Neon. Ethan?
Thank you. Well, this is one of those examples of projects that have been postponed due to just COVID and trying to, to plan, you know? We talked, the last time we had a two year, we hope that was our last two year maintenance contract and we keep talking a new marquee at that point. Fortunately, while we have the funds, we, we decided that is a capital project that can be postponed and our current sign continues to serve its function well, even in its amber glory. So this new contract did go up a little bit more than it has over the last couple times. And that is largely driven, of course, by the age of the sign and just the difficulty they have in finding components. They're still able to find them. They just have put us on notice that, you know, at some point, if we have a Bulwark component break, that, you know, they think they have enough on shelf to, to get us through this maintenance agreement term, but there is a possibility that they'll have to call and literally tell us, we don't have a part for you anymore. In which case, we're going to be forced to either deal with whatever is broken until we get a new one or, or get a new one. But we're hoping that this 24 month gives us the best price per month still going forward. Hopefully it gives us a large enough window in time that we will be able to get all of our ducks in the road and get that new marquee planned in, in front of you all and purchased and updated design wise as far as if it gets moved over or something like that.
We've already discussed the sandwich sign. Jamie and Dennis indicated we could put neon lights on it to get by for a while.
That's what I said.
Is that a legal motion?
As far as I can. If it was heard, I could have signed that.
When was that marquee written?
Uh, 2007.
Is that 36,000 dollars? Pretty short memory. What, what was the cost of the new marquee that we were writing?
Uh, the newest one we looked at was over.
About 50.
50, yeah. So, and that was just from the same company. We, we definitely, I mean, there's more options than just luminous neon, so we need to dial into that as well.
So this $173 a month maintenance agreement, is that then come out every month, take a look at it, make sure that it's working?
They come out quarterly and, and yeah, they'll come out quarterly and do the preventative maintenance and like component check. And they will come out though at any point without a service called to us if we call them in between when they come as well.
But what was the service contract plus any parts we might need?
Yep.
I was looking, you guys probably did the same thing and just figured out what it cost us annually to have that marquee, about $2,600, $2,600 annually. So annually, that's a pretty good, does a good job for that amount of money every year.
Get my lights, the glowings on in the city. That's a nice thing. Tells you how cold you really are.
Ms. Mayor, if there are any further questions, I'd make a motion to approve the 24 month maintenance agreement with Luminous Neon for an amount not to exceed $173 per month and $4,152 in aggregate and authorization for staff to sign necessary documents.
Okay. Have the motion and the second, we'll go to Jamie for the review on that one.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to approve the 24 month maintenance agreement with Luminous Neon for an amount not to exceed $173 per month and $4,152 in aggregate and authorization for staff to sign necessary documents, seconded by Councilmember Farmer.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Which carries unanimously. We'll get another couple of years of it. Next item on the agenda is consideration of agreement with Carrying Hands Humane Society.
Thank you. And the packet is a proposed per animal agreement for animal shelter services. The city has maintained a, a shelter or pound, if you will. We licensed it as a shelter through the state. At the wastewater treatment plant, it is outdoors. We've had to do various modifications as Department of Agriculture, who oversees those inspections, you know, has requested changes to be done, talking to Chief Orham. We kind of have not, at least in my time at the city, really housed a lot of animals out there. It's a small town. We're typically able to find owners pretty quick. And anymore with social media, a lot of people are already communicating or know their dogs are out well before it would be a 911 issue where somebody's called in a loose dog. So we contacted Carrying Hands to see if it was maybe an option to have them do the three day hold that would be if an animal or was found and put in. They submitted this. The advantage that we see to the city is it removes any liability or that ongoing maintenance concern that our kennel out of the wastewater treatment plant would cause. And then it also, they will, when somebody gets called to get their animal, if they go pick them up from Carrying Hands, then Carrying Hands immediately will just bill them for the services as opposed to the city. The only time the city should see a bill is if we have an animal that is makes, meets that whole three day threshold. And then they actually become the property of Carrying Hands at that point as a, as an abandoned stray. The city wouldn't owe that three days for the animal we killed. But the price that we was, you know, 1750 a day. So it's very reasonable. Now, when you factor in our staff time to have to go out and, you know, we ought to check them multiple times a day and make sure their food and water and something hasn't developed or things like that. So this is a one year trial. We thought we would try this out for one year. Don't foresee it to be a lot of cost again. Animals at large is not really a, a common occurrence, but just utilizing a, a local resource and it does save us. I put 250 in there, but Chief Orham informed me before meeting, actually that went up to $335 plus the $80 on top of that. So it'd be over $400 now, but that would save us just not having to relicense our own internal kennel. So. And Carrying Hands is, you know, in newness, not that far of a drive as far as staff time or anything, so.
Once there's no further discussion, I would make a motion to approve the agreement with Carrying Hands Humane Society for Animal Shelter Services from October 1st through December 31st, 2020, and for staff to sign necessary documentation. Second.
Third motion and second, we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to approve the agreement with Carrying Hands Humane Society for Animal Shelter Services from October 1, 2020 through December 31, 2021, and for staff to sign necessary documents, seconded by Councilmember Torres.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of Kansas Learning Center for Health Gala sponsorship.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, you saw the request letter in your packet there from the Kansas Learning Center for Health for their virtual gala event they're holding this year in light of the pandemic. Did note that we did sponsor last year at that top tier. That was a thousand dollars last year. This year, 1,250, 1,250 is the, is that top tier. And we feel that with COVID, that's hit all of our community organizations hard as far as fundraising or just normal visits, et cetera. It just, you know, is a good use of those community betterment funds to help out those organizations requesting such funding.
If there is no further discussions, Mayor, making motion to approve sponsorship of Kansas Learning Center for Health Gala Event for an amount not to exceed $1,250. Second.
Third motion and the second, we'll go to Jamie for that review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to approve sponsorship of Kansas Learning Center for Health Gala Event for an amount not to exceed $1,250, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next item is the discussion of K-Camp voting delegates for the annual meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Council, this is our first year with K-Camp or the Kansas County Association Multilane Pool, who we switched our liability and property insurance over to. Per the interlocal agreement that we entered into to be part of that organization, they do, obviously it's, it's member driven, member owned. So they do have an annual meeting and ask that cities have voting delegates. K-Camp's bylaws actually require that those voting delegates be elected officials. So some of our other organizations, you all can nominate staff such as myself or Jamie to serve in that stead for the city, but with K-Camp, that's not an option. So if we want to participate in that meeting, we would need to have people from the governing body step forward and be nominated by their peers to, to serve as that voting delegate. It is a virtual meeting, so if you all are interested or someone wants to represent the city and vote on our behalf, we will make sure to get that meeting information to you. It's October 14th via Zoom, so as long as you have a laptop, you should be able to participate. If not, you can come to City Hall and we'll set you up too. So, but really, it's, it's really your guys' call if, if any of you want or have the time to participate in this. I don't know that we were expecting any major, you know, changes or something controversial that will be voted on, but you know, we can't vote unless we have someone appointed, so.
How many delegates do they ask for?
Just one. And then an alternate if that person can't show.
It has to be an elected person.
Yeah. It can be either Mayor or City Council.
Can you do it then?
Well, I was going to say, I'm probably the one that's in front of the computer most days, so I was wrong there to think that you guys wanted me to do it.
I nominate Mayor Travis.
Second. We need an official vote on that, Brad.
We also need an alternate, if you want to have an alternate. We also need an alternate, if you guys have an alternate.
Can we make that all on the same motion? Okay, I'd like to nominate Sam Farmer for the alternate.
So that's second civil.
I'd make a motion to approve Dennis as voting delegate and myself as an alternate delegate for K-Camp Annual Meeting. Second. Okay, we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion to, by Councilmember Farmer to approve Dennis Travis as voting delegate and Sam Farmer as alternate delegate for the K-Camp Annual Meeting, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. You'll make sure to send that information up to me and Sam. Next item on the agenda, discussion of city hall lobby modification.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So we brought this before you all, you know, with the cares, funding and us having to create those direct aid plans for submission, those were all very tight timelines. Now that we know we've been approved, we have a moment to stop and breathe. As we looked at one of our projects, which was making a permanent barrier in City Hall at the customer service desk and then the, you know, the smaller customer service desk or the sit down desk. You know, what was proposed and funded in the plan would be a permanent glass barrier that would have aluminum kind of edging around it that would match the exterior of the doors, you know, to do lobby. We did, we'll have a little bit of price that we didn't have in original submission that the city would have to pay. Talking with our administrative staff, they indicated that even with that plexiglass partition, that hearing customers through that barrier has become difficult and that would have, you know, that has openings at the top and bottom where this would be completely solid and then have drawers to do pass through for like documents or those kinds of things. So we did have them, basically been out, you know, those round circle speakers. Anyway, as we got to talking, that will definitely be a drastic visual change within our, our lobby of a glass window with, you know, two little round silver speakers and some of the administrative staff don't feel that that's good. And going back and just discussing with, I know when City Hall did have its extensive remodel in 2009, 2010, which some of you are on the governing body then, you know, it was a conscious design choice to leave that lobby open. We do have the temporary barrier that, you know, we can put up and down as, as the situation would dictate. We asked for about 1,300. So if we did not fund this project, we would just notify the county that that would not be funded and they'll shift that into one of the other community support programs or we can work with them on, on that. But we figured that this is really kind of, wanted you all on board with that change if we make it or hear what your considerations were, if you've heard from members of the public, even on whether you think it's a good idea. It's just, definitely would be a, a large visual change in our, in our lobby from what people have, have been accustomed to for the last decade.
Well, I appreciated the letter that Julie sent out expressing her thoughts on that. And what came to my mind was are there, are there options? I mean, I think it's something we need to do, but I think we need to look at options of what we can do when we aren't under a COVID quarantine, that it could be opened up, have direct communication. But should we go through the same thing again with something else, that we would be able to close up? Is that something that would be viable?
Yeah. I mean, I, that is something we could, more look at it. You know, we've often talked about that door into our lobby area of just getting that secured because that originally is not a locking door and just for general security purposes, making that, that's something where we could, you know, speak to a few more contractors, see if they could get us something and more build that into a capital plan, you know, because it'll be a couple thousand bucks, most likely to fit it in with how it was originally, but it, it is a possibility. I mean, we're, we're under no obligation or, or need to do this. We do have the temporary and we do have the master policy as well that's, you know, providing protection for most staff and members of the public.
I'm going to agree with Sam on this. I think with the situation that we're in right now, I think it's good that we have that there, but when we're not, we need to keep that small town personal feel, you know, with the citizens being able to come into the office.
That's what I think of that, that next step, that we have to make a bulletproof.
And, you know, how far do you go?
How far do you go and where do you stop?
You know, I'm, I'm in favor of, I agree with Sam, but something we can take down when we're done with this COVID issue, take it down.
You know, that's the thing, you know, being over at Showalter during the day, we've got a lot of those safeguards in place and many of the residents that, that are there and their families that come and visit, they have a sense of.
Separation.
Of separation that it's just the, the social, the social fabric is, it's, it's not intentional, but it almost like it keeps getting broken down. There's, there's the individualism that's being lost with one another.
Just what we have removable?
Yeah. Our temporary barrier that public works built.
And let's stay with what we, I mean, my thought is stay with what we have while we're under the COVID, when we're not under it, take it down, like I said, get it back to the city. Who do people come in, they need help? I do.
And it's hard for people to communicate through that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we really don't need any action on this side of the issue.
No, just to kind of make sure, the general consensus is that continue using the existing barrier and there's no heartburn if we call the county and say, hey, we're not. Again, the, that project, my item was only 1,300 of our 200 plus thousand, so this was not a major project in our COVID prep.
And I like the idea of getting information from staff that has to work under those conditions, see what their thoughts are and make it good for them.
Okay.
And those can be stored somewhere in the event that they need to be brought out for use again.
And standard.
Sounds like we got a plan. We'll move on to the next item, and that is discussion of policy on handling code violations and fees.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is brought forth after some discussions I've had with all of you in, in individual capacities of just something to come back. And as we're looking at, you know, updating our, our codes and how we handle, so, you know, kind of give you all a broad overview, right now, we're, we have a very reactive mode of code enforcement. We don't have, you know, a, a code enforcement officer or anyone on city staff that's driving around actively looking for violations. It's largely complaint driven of, you know, neighbors or somebody will come in and say so and so's grass is too tall at this address. We send them a letter. They can comply or not comply going on. Some of our fees, because it's, it's that largely reactive, it's, it's kind of written into code that if they actually make it to municipal court, which, you know, is we, they can go drag out the process a long time really before we summon them to come to court. The judge has complete discretion on most of the things of, I think it's, you know, up to a thousand dollars in fines that can be assessed, but I mean, there's no graduated fee per, per certain violation or anything like that in code. The one problem, you know, some cities go completely the enforcement route of utilizing, you know, either a code compliance officer or their police department to issue summons immediately. They don't really even go through the letter process. You just, they think people should know the rules and if you don't, you get to go to the municipal judge. Others do more of our method, which is, you know, I think more focused on compliance and less on enforcement and punishment or, or fighting someone, if you will. But as this has come up in various forms with discussions with you all, just want to put out on the table for a general discussion item with you all, do you want us to handle or with the attorney here, you know, ask questions of what can be done? Because I know there's been questions before on the fees and if there's something we can do to make that a little more uniform across the board. So I will open it up for you all to discuss them.
I've read that and I'll tell you what, that's a Pandora's box. It can be as big as we want it to be, but I think that as was stated by one of our law enforcement people, that our code enforcement in court is negligible. And we have violations, ongoing violations in the city, and I think we need to put some teeth into some ordinances. I personally think that this is a big enough issue, but we need to sit down in a work session and we need to put together a program, ideas and, and the more, the more problematic areas that we need to focus on. You know, I for one hate to write an ordinance that isn't going to be enforced. It's a waste of time and it just creates that aura of, eh, it doesn't matter, I'll go and enforce it anyway, we can't have that. I, I would recommend talking further in a work session on this.
I think we need to too, but it also goes back to the judge. I mean, the judge can make his decision based off the ordinance and then, then what do we do?
So let's say we, the disorders we're talking about, let's say we say, okay, there's a fine, we're going to assess a fine of X. And it's established in the ordinance, does the judge have the latitude to see this case off through and then say, okay, we're going to weigh the fine?
And so the ordinance is written. Most of them, when you look at classification, unclassified A, B, or C misdemeanors, they have a fine amount all the way from zero to like a C, unclassified $500 and a B of $1,000 and A 2,500. The judge has full and complete latitude unless it's written into the ordinance, and it is in some cases, established at a minimum. For example, no insurance, first offense, it's a. is a minimum fine statewide in the city as well, three hundred dollars. Second infraction within three years is a fine of eight hundred dollars. Can't go any lower than that. Can a court suspend it? You know, they assess it, but suspend it in certain circumstances? Yes, they can. That's why you give the judge that kind of latitude, but you can write it so that there is no ability, this is it, this is the minimum, you gotta assess it. Some cities have, in order to, either just by policy, they've given the judge guidance, or they want it to be certain that it's just not a problem. There is no ability to do anything beyond a certain level of discretion. They've established graduated systems, I've written those. If you have a dog at large in a twelve-month period of time, that's all, depends on how you define it. First offense is a hundred dollars, second is two hundred, the third is five hundred. You can do that as well. You can also enhance it in different ways. You know, a dog at large, but along with that, the dog has not been registered, you have no proof of vaccination. So that first offense is two hundred different bodies. And one city does it that way. And then they just, judge just says, okay, that's been taken out of my hands, this is what you're gonna pay. And it doesn't matter what the defendant comes in with, it's what it is. So you, you do have that ability. You can go ahead and establish that. I agree that there's a number of different what-ifs that you probably want to discuss. What are our greatest chronic issues? What are our biggest problems? And this includes nuisance problems, weed violations, vehicles.
Just light.
Because we have huge problems with that.
What are we, are we talking about having to look at each and every ordinance and the bond associated with those?
Yes and no. Each and every one, based on the fact that we've got certain broadings that cover certain things. But they then cover, the nuisance ordinance covers a lot of stuff. Junk sitting around, tall weeds, whatever. We have a separate one for vehicles because we have to define what an inoperable vehicle is, was, and shall be. So you're probably looking at, and then the animal control kinds of ordinances, three broad categories that we deal with a lot.
Right, right.
And you know which ones we're dealing with.
Yeah. So those are, it's not like you're gonna sit here all night long and have to go through eighty different ordinances a Sunday. You've got basically got just a couple categories. And then you can either uniform those up or you can do those independently. And I will tell you that most cities do do those independently. I mean, they have a different view of how they're gonna handle animal control versus weeds, you know, and that kind of stuff. And then junk vehicles. There are a few others that we can always throw out and give you a list.
Same competitive yard wage.
That's so true. You know, you'll get into some of those things or, oh, certain other types of code violations or hygienic kinds of issues and different things that have better apply in different other chapters in our code. But it's not a huge list to be fairly exhaustive.
Well, I kind of agree with Sam. I think it's a work session topic, but I'd really appreciate you listing out alternatives for us to consider.
Yeah, it's not a problem to give you some general categories of what I, it comes up a lot in smaller cities. And it's just a chronic problem. I mean, there is, I don't care how big the city is, everybody's got problems with junk vehicles and weeds and people who just don't care to take care of their property at the same level that the societal norm would dictate. And so what do you do about it? Every year, we give these same citations, these same people, or we have the same folks whose animals be taken out. What do you finally do about it? Because clearly what we're doing isn't giving some of these folks a message, or at least the inspiration to change the behavior. And that's what you really need to do.
So we need to set the main topics that we want to address, the main problem areas.
And then, and then to what extent, how aggressively, as a policy matter, because that's what you guys are here for, aggressively you want to deal with them?
Well, I think we would appreciate your guidance on some of that too.
Well, that's what other cities do. This is what you can consider. This is the.
I get to do this frequently.
You have a general sense of our demeanor, of what we're following, our mindset is what we're looking for as an end result.
And then it really comes down to get to the, out of the weeds and into what's a clear pattern. We really want to make a point with, it's no different than in certain parts of town, you start having problems with chronic speeding, or people run the stop sign all the time. And city councils or commissions will come and say, okay, we're gonna put a stop to that. And we're gonna deal with it. So you can just simply do it by instruction and policy to the police chief and his officer. Or in our case, with some of these things, more along the lines of providing fairly clear expectations of what you want to say. And then we want to address this, because we've had enough complaints, we've heard enough about it, we're through hearing those things without at least making an attempt to get the public to realize this needs to be fixed.
Is this something Ethan, that we could do a work session on and start this process before the end of the year?
Yeah. Most likely, our normal fall work session will be on the agenda at that first meeting in October, September date. We can definitely get it on there.
I have a question, and it's kind of pertaining to this, but I have a question as to codes and enforcement. If we have a property in the city that has definite structural deficiencies that we've not been able to do anything about, and if that property, and I say we haven't been able to do anything about, maybe we have, but if that property is put up for sale, is that an opening, is that an opportunity for us to look at that property being for sale, to be sold conditionally upon the care of that deficiency? Or would that have to be done through like a building inspector?
I'd have to go through a building inspector. For instance, I know of one property that's had a bunch of balcony and the shed roof and things added on to it. There's all these joints or hinge points, as you would call it, and there's just, there's nothing to put that thing together properly on this house. And so a building inspector, where it's sold, is gonna see these things and all this has to be fixed before this can be sold. Where you trust, you hope that building inspector is gonna be happy enough to catch that.
Can we tie that building inspection back in with the city getting a copy of that inspection report on any inspection on any house?
Not typically. And the reason for that is you'll see properties sold all the time as is where is. And we don't constitutionally have the ability to prepare someone's pre-transfer of that asset.
Right.
So you run afoul of some things there with our ability to legislate. Now, that still doesn't change the fact that, that if we go buy, I don't care who owns it, it's current seller or new buyer, and it's got what you referred to earlier, when I brought your deficiencies, if there really are, if it doesn't meet code, we can easily dose that up. Whoever gets it inherits that problem. Whoever has to fix it, you know, whoever owns it's gonna have to fix it. So we can compel that behavior, but you can't hold up, you typically can't hold up a sale in the general sense, because someone might say, because I'm just gonna tear it down, you know. And so you can't say, well, you gotta fix it first. No, I don't want to fix it. I just want to run into it really quickly with a high loader and turn it into firewood and be done. They have every right to do that. So.
That answers my question. Well, I think that's gonna be a fairly broad topic of conversation. I'd be interested in that. Working in the schedule will give us all the time to think about how that works. I always want to be compassionate towards citizens that are having problems, but at the same time, for the potential offenders, we do need to graduate a fine schedule that puts some teeth into.
The other problem that you're going to hit too, and that, as you discussed, we'll come up quickly, is you have, if you choose to live in close proximity to others, you know, in a town, then you're, you inherit the cultural expectations of everybody around you. What may, you know, what's treasured to somebody is junked to another, kind of a typical thing. This is the same way. What looks just fine to somebody, the next door neighbor just goes nuts. And so we get those phone calls regularly about, can't you do something about this? Well, to a minimum standard, and that's what we should really talk about, what is that minimum standard? And what are we gonna do to enforce? How seriously do we want to get into that? Where do we want to leave some latitude for the judge? Where do we want to make sure he's clear that he or she that it needs a little bit of a push?
But when it comes to that too, we have this discussion. We do need to look at our building codes and get into the latest IVC regulations on two thousand four, two thousand seven.
Yeah, two thousand six.
Two thousand six standards.
And that isn't necessarily unusual, but there are that old. On the other hand, we're one, two, three, four additions behind. And even those are pretty effective in terms of the IVC codes. But yeah, you're right. There's, there are things that have changed in that much time, that it's a good idea for us to. And we no longer have to maintain some badly numbered, we can get by with one set. We had to have three sets of those that sat together best in the city. And we paid a fortune for each set. You can just have one.
Ethan, is there, this is gonna be an off-the-session, imagine a work session. Can you get some agreeing before we can?
Yeah, I mean, we can send you the applicable section of code.
Yeah.
That would normally run into this. The other thing, I guess I would ask the council where to consider just add to work sessions, again, going from that, again, depending on cities and then smaller cities, it's usually more reactive process. So you know, it's go, go put the oil on the squeaky wheel, so to speak, is how proactive, because that does obviously put in demand on staff time or it begins to change expectation. You know, legit citizens, I comment, you know, lines of police officers are giving the citation for weeds. I mean, we went that route as opposed to letters, but I can tell you from ours, I believe the letter certified mail method, it's great from a legal standpoint because we confirmed, you know, when we mailed it and all of that. But that is definitely an antiquated way, I think, of notification, but it's one that's required because of, we need the legal proof because a phone call may or may not have happened type issue. That's why I know some cities have begun shifting more towards getting them in court because, you know, an officer or a code enforcement officer can be vested with that authority, basically, to say, here you go, now you're gonna come talk to the judge.
Or that door hanger. There's different ways for us to provide service that are more effective. People know, they see this from the city of Alsted, they're gonna take it out. And so we get it back. Well, we legislate that in such a way that we made the attempt. That still doesn't guarantee they're coming to court. And it's difficult to get a judge to order, and we speak from our own experience, order a bench board for somebody over tall grass. Done it. But we don't care to.
I think we need to look, I think we need to look at the ordinances, just sorting those things up so that we're all comfortable with the fines and the fees and all to kind of take some of that subjectiveness out of what it could be.
And in hand also, what Ethan, I think, I would think we were referring to also, is proactive versus reactive. Cities, for example, over the years, I've had them where the only way that a complaint ever came to fruition is two citizens of the community had to sign off on a complaint and present it to the city. Staff never touched it. They never got involved until that happened. Well, that created problems because that's your neighbors and they don't want you to know that they're complaining. Well, then they just sit and pull the problems. Well, then they let them do it anonymously. Well, that was problematic too, because you still didn't want, sooner or later, somebody would find out in a smaller town. Then some cities would shift and go, let's go the other direction. We'll have an officer whose total job, job script is to drive around town and find everything. In order to justify their existence, they created World War III. That didn't work really well either. Then you have, so then you have something in between. That's where you guys could, is okay, how aggressively do we want, do we want it to be a situation where if Public Works is driving around and they see something? And then we also have to be careful in terms of the common law. If you've got your backyard fence, we don't get to go over and look over it. There's an expectation of trying to see a six-foot dog-eared cedar saw on the fence. But if that's next door with a chair picker and they look over and see a problem, you can't. So there's all kinds of things that you really kind of need to be educated on and take into account and how you want to do it and how far you want to go with city employees. Inevitably, after having been through it probably a dozen times, we'll get a room full. We'll need to move to another place. Because if we really do it at a certain level, where you get some people happy and unhappy showing up and they want to give you an earful.
Well, that's the one drawback from reactive is you do get basically that whole thing of you're gonna have people that just might naturally, depending on who you live by, or that, certain areas of the town will probably be more complained about than others. And so then the people that are getting complained on immediately can point across the, you know, well, I can drive, you know, what didn't fly on college is totally allowable on Pine Street.
Right.
Because the Pine neighbors aren't complaining about college at E and L. And so then if it gets to that process, we get to have the complaints coming, saying that's not fair, you're not enforcing across the board.
Before they even come in to talk to me before court, I can repeat to them what they're about to say. And I'm far enough along my career that I want ten dollars for it. It's not a dollar because I can retire that much money. But they'll come in and say, well, I can give you, and I did, I drove around town with my smartphone and I have eighteen pictures of properties far worse than mine. I don't care. I mean, that's not the way you want to say it tactically, but that's what you'll get into.
I was going down the highway eighty mile an hour and I had sixteen cars pass me.
It's the exact same logic. It was just your day.
It's gonna take some time to get a resolution for this, so.
Good luck, Ethan. Let me know how that works out, because I'll do whatever you want.
We'll set this for work session. And Ethan, can we have Brad at that work session to help us weigh through all this?
We'll compel his attendance.
Yeah, we can have him bring in also.
I was just saying, there is to.
Whatever you provide. All right, guys. We're gonna keep moving on our agenda. The next item on the agenda is executive session. We don't have any tonight. So that's gonna take us to the report section. And we'll start with governing body. And I'm gonna start with you tonight, Ed.
I have nothing, sir.
Nor sir, Mr. Mayor. Mike, Sam, the only thing I want to mention, and I've mentioned it before, the city really looks nice over our parks, the cemetery, the levee, where the city or contract, they're doing just a fantastic job doing maintenance across the board, keeping things looking very, very nice. Appreciate those comments. Well, that brings my turn up. Jamie's made sure I've got a couple of proclamations this evening. So we'll get started with proclamation number one, and it's for Fire Prevention Week 2020. Whereas the city of Alsted, Kansas is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Alsted. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than two thousand six hundred and thirty people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred fifty-seven thousand home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than one hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred annually between 2013 and 2017. And whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with thirty-one percent of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. Whereas Alsted's residents should stay in the kitchen when frying is turned on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Alsted's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Alsted's residents are responsive to public education majors and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, serve up fire safety in the kitchen, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I Therefore, I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of Alsted, do hereby proclaim October fourth through the tenth, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. And I urge all the people of Alsted to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2020. And to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Alsted's Fire and Emergency Services. Wonder where Jamie gets home. She should have a reading.
Wish yes to repeat them.
We'll, we'll move on to the next one, and this is a a little shorter. Public Natural Gas Week, October fourth through the tenth. Says Public Natural Gas Week Proclamation in honor of our local, community-owned natural gas utility, which if residents don't realize, probably saves them quite a bit of money on the gas bill. So in this proclamation, whereas we, the citizens of Alsted, Kansas, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit natural gas utility. And as consumers and owners of our natural gas utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas City of Alsted provides our homes, businesses, farms, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective natural gas, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. And whereas City of Alsted is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the natural gas utility industry is changing, and it will continue to change over the next few years, with the goal of allowing individual consumers to choose their power supply while continuing service from their current natural gas distributor. And whereas this concept of customer choice in generation is a new one that will have a broad impact on and affect all parts of the natural gas utility industry, including the consumer utility relationship. And whereas this community's natural gas system, City of Alsted's first and only purpose, is to work in partnership with its customer owners to furnish an essential public service and the best customer service to community citizens at lower cost rates. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Alsted will continue to work to ensure that consumers benefit from any changes in the natural gas utility industry, just as it has since the utility was created to serve all the citizens of Alsted. And be it further resolved that the week of October fourth through the tenth, 2020, be designated Public Natural Gas Week in order to honor City of Alsted for its contributions to the community and make its consumer owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of City of Alsted's overall contributions to their well-being. And be it further resolved that our community joins hands with other public natural gas systems in the United States that ensure cost-cutting competition for natural gas customers through local and community ownership. Now, we will move on to the manager section of the reports, and that's you, Ethan.
Let's turn out this evening's report with the staffing update. The city has accepted the resignation of Ronnie Peterson from the Public Works Department, who moved on for a another job opportunity. And so we've begun advertising to replace that position. We will continue accepting applications through this week, and then hopefully we can introduce the week of October five. Police, Alsted police have had sixty-three calls for service, sixteen traffic stops, and ten criminal cases since the last meeting. Public Safety Clerk Hoover has been in training today and tomorrow on the city's court software. The city clerk, Edley, is also going through that training as well. The department has finished review and updated and implemented eight new policies for the department. That is part of a partnership or a service that we get through K Camp. So I just want to commend Josh and Sergeant Stovall on doing that review process and getting those policies updated as needed. Patrol officers have also switched shifts from days to nights, so you should see some new faces as far as who you've been used to seeing the last couple of months. And then also want to take a moment to congratulate Officer Miller and his family on their new baby boy. Alsted Fire has had sixteen calls for service since the last meeting, including standby for EMS. And Alsted EMS has had thirty-two calls for service since the last meeting for a year-to-date total of four hundred and forty-four. Past week's calls have seen about a two-thirds of those in Alsted's original service area and then a third in the Sedgwick Response Area. Fire EMS is working on ordering supplies and implementing projects per the city's direct aid plan for a portion of care spending. And EMS staff is also trained with several pieces of equipment, including the new mechanical CPR devices. And then we're able to utilize the SimMan mannequin for part of that training, so they're very excited to use that. Parks and Recreation is working on the transition as volleyball season ends and basketball season begins in the coming weeks. Staff also are working with public work staff on getting the pool shut down in winter runs and the maintenance on the levee trail. Coordination with the tree board is also underway for fall projects, including the removal of old and diseased trees and then the planting of new trees. Wedgewood Golf Course is wrapping up league play in the coming weeks. Staff have again aerified greens, top dressed in vertica, and they've been working on overseeding several playing areas. Staff continues plans out there for two more tournaments potentially, and then the course continues to stay busy with the shift to cooler weather. More golfers are coming out with that cool weather. And work continues on the AMI system implementation with the administrative staff working on software implementation and public work staff continuing working on replacement of old surfaces as needed and identified during those meter changeouts by the contractors. So that is all I have this evening for you all. Unless there's any questions.
Council, any questions for Ethan? Well, that concludes our agenda this evening, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment. And we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to adjourn at seven fifty-seven PM, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.